Call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I would like you to speak in another language. In the space of America and to the Republic for Christian fans, for my mission, my regard in the visible for the mercy and justice of God.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We generally don't see this many people here unless we're talking about hot mix plans or roundabouts. So thank you for coming tonight. Um, Tony, can you take us through all girl calls, please?
Bear Hurston.
Present.
Councilor Hankstrom.
Present.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Present.
Councilor Quaid.
Present.
Councilor Heim.
Present.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna skip down to correspondence. We have an email from John Goldman, former counselor of Fort City of Rice Lake endorsing candidate, um, Darryl Johnson. And then we have the consent agenda with the June ninth, twenty twenty-five council meeting minutes, executed claims from June tenth to June twenty-third totaling one hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars, thirty cents. Council. Entertainer motion.
I'll make a motion and accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion right a second.
All support.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the consent agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Department reports. We have a utility update and report. Uh, who would like to present?
Jane.
Jane. And Jane, I don't know if your microphone's on when you get up there, but just turn that on if it isn't.
Do you want a paper?
I'll get it first.
Is that there too?
I'll just go here. Alright. Uh, utility report here for the month of June.
Can you mind, Jane? Can you just turn around and address the comments? We can hear you out here, but I don't think they can hear you.
Um, starting with water, uh, water work, utility rate management system, Tony, myself. Oh, leaving training and Rob and her select to have been training on the water work system for sewer and water. All the goals to have the data that we have that mitigate in the system and tie it to the twenty-four six utility rate analysis proposals and budget. Sewer, sewer modeling project, uh, Rob and Tony and myself, that's the SBA project managers, uh, creating a sewer modeling risk. Uh, we'll be looking at the system as a whole. Concentrating more on the western side of our system to future development, who will be providing. Then with the system data and the need. Need should be the week, uh, few months from dirt before five, start up this project. This project is mostly funded by WLSSE, splash resource renew, uh, the grant to them that we receive by the way, so it's water service.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
The comparison spreadsheet or?
Yes, please.
Mr. Hendrickson to try and run. For the month of May, water let me build customers was one million, four hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight gallons. Fire division by the fire apartment, but the water deposition was on two fires, but the total consumption of one million, four hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight gallons. The water that was built from comfort systems, told was one million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six gallons. With the total difference of two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy gallons. That's a loss of one million, five hundred and eighty gallons. Sewer, we follow, um, we're going to customers with one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, fifteen gallons. Go on, guessing the total. Five hundred for zone one, the year reading was five hundred and seventy-two thousand, ninety-nine. Zone nine, the year reading plus forty thousand, six hundred, total reading, one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine. That's sixty-eight point one percent and page one reading at one million, fifty thousand, five hundred. LS nine reading, seven hundred and eight thousand, total for WLSSE at one million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand gallons. Eight hundred and forty-eight, five hundred. That's the total sewer difference. Uh, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-five gallons. Total for the year to date, the water that we built was six million, six hundred and two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine. Total water, not a ton, was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand gallons. Total water consumption, six million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine gallons. Total bills and comfort systems was seven million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven seventeen, with the total water difference of nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight gallons. With the total loss of five hundred, excuse me, five thousand, eight hundred and five gallons. Total year-to-date for sewer that we build was five million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty gallons. And. Total at WLSSE is built was eight million, seven, or five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred, total sewer, just now three thousand, one hundred and thirty-one, twenty.
Any questions from the council person?
I just looked like twenty-nine, one. One number, I think you misread, maybe I, maybe I just misheard it, but the total dollar amount of water loss. Of. One thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. I think you said one million. That's it. That's the case where you got problems.
Thank you. Alright, moving on. We're gonna pass over council reports unless anybody has a burning desire to talk about what they did in the last two weeks. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, we have the twenty-twenty-four audit review with Mary Lee. Thank you for coming up to Rice Lake again.
Thank you for having me. Um, so we'll get started. I'll see how many people put to sleep in the audience for you, but, um, as usual, we have the bound audit report in a separate letter as well. And then we have the PowerPoints. Um, I always just stick to the PowerPoints a little bit easier, some graphs where you've been, where you're at, a little bit easier to compare. Uh, but feel free to stop me at any time. Definitely open dialogue if you have questions, um, at any time. So we'll get started. Um, here on page two, the agenda, we'll do some required communications. We'll go over the city audit results, the financial results, and then any key issue or summary items that came from the audit. Page three, so our primary responsibility as auditors is provide an opinion on the fairness of the financial statements presented tonight. So we do a review internal accounting controls. We want to make sure that there are controls and that they're working. If they weren't working, we would definitely let the council be aware of that. Um, risk-based audit approach, we don't test every transaction. We do some detail level transaction testings, and then we do some higher level current year, um, to prior year, current year to budget, things like that. Significant accounting policies, those are gonna be outlined in note one. We did have a new standard this year, Gatsby one-on-one, um, dealing with comp apps, so we had to reassess those. Um, so we will book those and under the new standard going forward. Page four. Um, corrected and uncorrected misstatements here. So we do come in and help just mainly with the year-end entries, right? And accounts receivable, accounts payable, we get your, um, depreciation up to where it needs to be. Um, pretty normal, um, no big adjustments this year, um, pretty consistent year-over-year. We continue to work with Tony and her team, um, to try and minimize those as well. Uncorrected, we did have, um, due to implementation, Gatsby one-on-one, about an eighteen-hundred-dollar difference from what would have been booked prior year. We passed on that just due to immaterial, and then next year will be consistent year-over-year. Page five. Um, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We come out here for a couple of days, get the audit work done, um, then we get everything else via electronically. Page six here, unmodified opinion, so, um, on the basic financial statement, so highest level of assurance that us as auditors can give. We do have three material weaknesses, segregation and duties. Um, you have been able to segregate out quite a bit of that. Um, so we have controls in place to help mitigate that. It's just, um, you have one person that can go start to finish from a transaction. And right now, it's just not cost beneficial to try and separate that out. The audit adjustments, like we talked about, we come in and help with those, and then we do, um, draft the financial statements and notes. We do it all day, every day. We do, um, send it to Tony and her team to review to make sure that the numbers are accurate. We also test Minnesota legal compliance, about seven areas there, and we had no findings noted. Overall claim report. Page seven, we'll get into the actual financial results. So this is government-wise, it's gonna track your depreciation, um, expense and everything, um, with all of your governmental funds. Here you can see the biggest change is gonna be your capital grants. Last year was at four hundred and eighty-six thousand, this year about two hundred and eight hundred. Really depends on what funding you get for the assets that you're putting, um, in with the, um, city. Otherwise, pretty consistent. Page eight. Then here are your, um, government-wide expenses. So where's that money going out? Again, the biggest change here is gonna be your public works, right? You decrease some of your works on the road. Um, and if you did do a road project, it's probably gonna be capitalized. So since those expenses will not be in here. Page nine. Your enterprise funds, so we, um, combine these, the water and sewer for this slide here. Uh, revenues did increase from the prior year. You had an additional intergovernmental grant funding in twenty-twenty-four, so that shot up quite a bit. It won't be in your expenses because you did add it as an asset, so it looks kind of wonky, um, but it is sitting in then your, um, net investment in capital assets. Increase in expenditures due to increase, I should say, increase, um, in repairs and maintenance in the current year. Depreciation expense in there is about three hundred and ninety-four thousand, so you actually had an operating loss of about fifty thousand, but last year you had about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar loss. Um, so a little bit better this year than last year. Page ten, then we go ahead and break out those funds separate. So water funds here. Um, very similar operations when you look at that, um, net operating loss this year, um, compared to your gain last year, really depends on what funding you're getting, um, and the expenses. Page eleven. So this is where it looks really weird. So your non-operating revenues, it's gonna be your intergovernmental grant that you received. Um, and then your expenses for that is sitting in your assets, so that's why it won't show up there. Page twelve. Like to show you just your general fund here. So right now, you're sitting at about five months of expenditures and unassigned fund balance. So unassigned fund balance, about eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, compared to one point seven million of expenditures. So you're right at about where the, um, state auditor wants you to be between five and six months, um, because you get taxes, pretty heavily tax-based. It takes you about five to six months to hit those. Decrease in revenues about one hundred and seventy-two thousand, decrease in expenditures about three point three million. That was your capital outlay, um, and spending down your grant proceeds there. Transfer out of about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, this went to road and bridge and fire. That was your LGA allocation. So you had decided you're gonna use some of those funds for each of those categories, and so you did transfer them. So overall, a net decrease in fund balance of about six hundred and thirty thousand. Um, so pretty, um, doing fine in the general fund. You just wouldn't wanna go year-over-year with that significant of a decrease. Um, right now, again, sitting at about eight hundred and ninety-six thousand on the side. So just continue to monitor that. Page thirteen, road and bridge funds here, um, so did have an increase in taxes and miscellaneous revenue. You did decrease your road maintenance this year, so your expenditures did go down. Transferring in, talked about from the general fund of about one hundred and eighty-two thousand there. So your fund balance actually increased by about three hundred and sixty thousand. So it took it from a, uh, negative hundred and forty-two thousand to sitting at a positive two hundred and eighteen thousand. I think it's been a little while since that's been positive, so it's good. And then page fourteen, so the fire funds here, um, just slight increase in taxes, and then you did have increase in investment earnings. Um, you did increase in capital expenditures this year. I think the training center and fire year were purchased this year, and so that's why, um, you had an increase in expenditures. So fund balance still about four hundred and thirty-one thousand, decreased by about twelve thousand from last year. Page fifteen, so when we combine all of your governmental fund revenues, we just like each of those categories, kind of comparing year-over-year. Um, so again, your intergovernmental fluctuates depending on, uh, what grants you received for the projects that you, um, have going on. That is also where your LGA comes in. Page sixteen, then where does that money go out? So now your governmental funds, so we do, um, show capital outlay. Those, those are for your capital asset items. Um, you can see from twenty-twenty-three, pretty dropped significantly to twenty-twenty-four there. So still some capital outlay going on, but not as significant. Everything else remained fairly consistent. Page seventeen. Here's your days expenditures in fund balance, like I talked about. You wanna have, um, one hundred and eighty-three, um, days there. So you are above what you need right now. Page eighteen. This is your general and road and bridge fund, so your fund balance classification, and then compared to your total expenditures there. Um, you can see that almost all of these categories increased. Your signs stay, um, consistent from year to year. But you really increased your unassigned and your restricted. Um, restricted is gonna be your road and bridge. Most of that is gonna be in that network. Page nineteen. So the state auditor does require the financial statements and reporting forms to be uploaded. The deadline is June thirtieth. That will be met. I somehow missed this bullet, so it should say overall decrease in governmental fund balances, just with all of the spend down and the spending of bond proceeds from prior year. Um, on your capital outlay, and then some of those projects were funded internally. Um, overall, increase in proprietary funds is gonna be due to your taxes, lease revenue, and then intergovernmental revenues as well. So page twenty, so just some key issue and summary items here. So we like to talk about budget to action. General fund revenues were over budget by about seven hundred and twenty-two thousand. Expenditures exceeded budget by about one million. Again, with what the city does, you really just budget for property taxes right now. Um, something to consider would be implementing a budget with more of those categories, intergovernmental, um, interest income, listings, things like that, when you get there. Um, so then expenditures are offset then just with that tax side. So that's why you're so far over both revenues and expenditures. So you actually budgeted for loss of about thirty-nine thousand. You had an actual loss of about six hundred and thirty thousand. Um, public safety was over by about one hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Capital outlay, we talked about about sixty-two hundred and ninety-three thousand over budget. And then principal and interest is not budgeted for, so you pay about three hundred and twenty-six thousand, a principal and interest out of the general fund. Transfers out of about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand there. Road and bridge fund expenditures were under budget by about eighty-nine thousand. Revenues exceeded budget by about twenty-two thousand. Again, you have your transfers in coming there, budgeted for a gain of about sixty-eight thousand, actual gain of three-sixteen, which puts you to positive fund balance. Building inspection, um, funding expenditures are over budget by about sixty-seven thousand, um, but revenues also exceeded budget by about fifty-four thousand. Budgeted for a great even came in and an actual loss of about three thousand there. So fund balance still sitting at about positive thirteen thousand. Broadband fund, mainly accounting for your lease receivable, um, with the activity there, deferred inflows about two hundred and eighty-four thousand and then under about fifteen thousand. Page twenty-one. Just the highlight overview of the water fund, having a positive change in that position about two hundred and six thousand. Sewer had a positive change in that position as well as about one point eight. Increased cash by about two hundred and twelve thousand total between water and sewer, um, so positive there as well. So just continuing to monitor your debt payments and special assessment collection, make sure you're collecting enough, um, and your rates are enough to pay for that activity. So that was a brief overview, hopefully no surprises, um, but I didn't know if any follow-up questions?
Any questions in the council? I think we're good. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Are you gonna head back home right away?
I am. Sneak out.
That's fine. How many miles do you have on your fast car now?
Um, over two-twenty-five. It'll be sad when I have to retire.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next we have Head of the Lake United Way letter. There's a letter for rental at City Hall for babysitting training. Uh, Tony, can you take us through this?
So we have someone that wants to rent the, rent the hall, um, for the Head of Lake United Way. They're offering up a babysitting. Training for youth aged eleven through seventeen, which would be free of charge to those that signed up for the training. Um, they offered it first to, um, veterans, children, sorry, I'm trying to find the letter here, but. Um, and now I think they've opened it up to, to the rest of, of the community. So they're just asking that, um, council agree to waive the rental fee for this, this rental.
Okay. Council open for discussion?
I don't see any problem with waiving the fee.
This sounds like a good program. You know, my granddaddy's went through a similar program, it exists for several years ago. I think it worked out well for her to babysit.
Like this is something that's definitely good for the community, so we'll move on for that.
And that they're going over the CPR. If anybody's interested, I believe that there's more spaces open in the Victory Fund that offers free CPR training. Um, there's a flyer out of the foyer if anybody's interested, but, um, I think that this is a great community, um, project, and I like that it's free, it's offered free to, to youngsters that are trying to babysit. Okay. Alright, well, I will entertain a motion.
Make the motion to waive the building fee for this project.
Thank you. I have a motion right a second. Can you further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, next we have Board of Adjustment appointments. Um, Tony, can you take us through this one?
Sure. Uh, so according to our zoning ordinance, number twenty-two, it establishes the Board of Adjustment in Article ten that says it should consist of five members who shall be appointed by the city council as provided in this ordinance. All of whom shall be residents of the city of Rice Lake. Uh, Board of Adjustment terms are for two years. Bob Whitmire has handed in his letter, letter of resignation effective immediately. So current, that leaves currently serving on the Board of Adjustment Katie Bukelich, Greg Houghen, and Anne Mapoly. So with Bob's resignation, that brings that membership down to three members and set up the required five. Um, state law does not dictate who should comprise the Board of Adjustment, uh, but a lot of cities have their city council as the, the BOA. Um, or they allow appeals from the BOA to council. Right now, um, if anybody wants to appeal a decision from the Board of Adjustment, that has to go to district court. So. This is kind of the only board that has final say on something, where most things are recommendations to council for the final say. Um, so just in, in talking with, um, with our city attorney by pouring, um, and just, you know, trying to, trying to figure a good way to fill those vacant spots on the Board of Adjustment. Um, we're kind of thinking that it may be a good idea to have, to appoint council members to that board. And then as, like you said, it's a two, two-year term, so as those remaining members' terms expire. If we want to replace it with the full council, we can certainly go that route, or if you wanna have a mix of some councils, some. I think two of them right now are, are also serving on the planning commission, and then one is just a, a resident, that this is the only commission she serves on.
How often do they meet, Tony?
Um, it's only as needed, so only when we receive venue's request. I would say twice a year, maybe. It's not very often. Um, and we do have, there's the sixty-day window where we have to have a response to the applicant, so. You know, we do have to schedule a hearing within that time, but Carly usually will work with whoever's on the board to find a day and a time that works with, with the rest of the board members.
And our legal counsel didn't see a problem with any conflict of interest to have a council member on before the judgment?
No, no, he, he's been most of the communities he works with, actually, the council is the Board of Adjustment. They're one in the same, so.
My personal feeling is I don't mind if it's a mix of all. Community members as well as. From planning and zoning and from here, that's okay. I don't mind the mix. Just so there's not as much, I don't know, control over everything by certain people. Is this something we need to hold on to late or?
Um, not necessarily. Um, I mean, the ordinance does say that if there's vacancies, council is supposed to fill them, but. I, as far as I know, we don't have any applications pending or anyone you've talked to.
I've had two people show interest. They're both planning commission members. Um, and I know Suzanne is aware of that as well. Um, and I think the idea there was if there's. It makes more sense to have a higher level of decision makers involved than having four members be planning commission members. Kind of our, our thoughts on it.
I don't know if everybody could hear what Carly had said, but we're looking for, at this time, we're looking for a balance of community members with council. Uh, the council bringing in, uh, understanding of the impact of the decisions that are made, and then the community as, um, just balance, bringing balance and, um, of community being part of that process.
I like the thought of having a couple of counselors on that.
So you don't necessarily need to wait. People tonight, if you wanna think about it a little bit hard.
It sounded like we had to volunteer, so.
I am okay with that, if needed, I'd be happy to be on there.
All right. Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, that was easy. I'll entertain a motion to nominate Counselor Heim and. Hendricks, Hendrickson, Heystrom, it's going to catch me for another three chapters, I apologize. We have a motion? I'm sorry, I need someone to make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll support.
Thank you very much, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, same sign. Thank you both. Okay, we're going to move on to the Gordon Road project. This road keeps coming back around. Tony, you take us through this, please.
Sure. Yeah, so we had originally brought this forth, I think it was May of last year. And also had decided to table it because we didn't necessarily have it in the budget for a twenty twenty four project. Shane did work it into his budget for twenty twenty five, and I think we talked about it at the budget meetings. And I know Shane's talked about it in his reports, but we just have not had an official council approval to move forward with the project. So there is an estimate here from Kunst. For the work for thirty three thousand one hundred and thirty eight dollars and fifty cents. So just looking for looking for approval for completing this project.
That is already in the budget, correct?
Yes. Yeah, and that estimate I will even stated from twenty four, but they are still honoring that price.
Do we end up any other estimates from any other companies?
We did initially, but that estimate was was rescinded. I think that we were having discussions about it last last May.
Okay, so we don't need to go and get another one?
No.
Just go with the one business?
Yeah, the the dollar amount, is it large enough that we're required to have two estimates?
Okay. The second piece is the actual contract, so we'll split this up. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Kunst construction estimate for thirty three thousand. One hundred thirty eight dollars fifty cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the Kunst construction thirty three thousand one hundred thirty eight dollars fifty cents.
Thank you, I have a motion to, I have a second, I'll support. You, I'll be further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, same sign. Next we have the. Contract with Kunst.
Kind of our standard standard contract that we use for all of our road construction. The time of performance, we have put, you know, made this year through September fifteenth of twenty twenty five, kind of give them a window to get the the project done in. And then it just references the the quote that was just approved as the the contract price.
Any questions from the council?
I just want to add a little bit, the last ten years that I've been on board here, we've we've done a lot of a lot of roadwork in Rice Lake and. The roads are significant, they improve what they what they used to be. This is one of the shortest little roads on there. The dollar mountain paid thirty thousand dollars, but that's that's the big cost. But so this is getting to the end of where we. We may not have to put quite so much into the gravel road again for a while.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting the Gordon Road contract, would Kunst say aye? Aye, in both same sign. Yes. Now, the moment we've arrived in, I'm sorry.
We didn't get a motion on that one.
I'm sorry?
We didn't get a motion.
We didn't, did I just skip right over it? I'm so sorry. I'll organize me to motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the Gordon Road contract, Kunst.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the Gordon Road contract, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you, Tony. Okay, now, the moment we've all been waiting for. As 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 you know, Counselor Heystrom has stepped on. I just want to add. We we have worked for for many years back when you were on the Planning and Zoning Board and. And we stuck out at that time to be just a very level headed call demeanor. I appreciated your wisdom at the time to really sort through planning and zoning and and the beast that it is. I've enjoyed working with you over these years and I'm really going to miss having you here, so.
Thank you.
Just want to thank you for your service for our community.
Well, thank you, it's been a distinct pleasure and an honor really to serve the people at Rice Lake, so. I know last week we kind of said goodbye to and had mutual words of adoration, but I really meant them. And I wish you all the best, bless you and thank you.
So with that, that opens up a really neat opportunity, and this is an opportunity that we can bless a new person coming on to the council and serving with us. This isn't an election, it's not a popularity contest. This is the council filling in a position that needs to be filled. This someone is going to be working within council peacefully. And work towards a common goal. Now, none of us are here to agree with each other. But we are here to respect each other and to come to a mutual decision. And I think that that weighs very importantly on on all of us. Most of us who have been on here for many years have seen the council flourish and been smooth and we've been a well oiled machine. That hasn't always been the case. And so I'm hoping that tonight will be the time to turn that around and really have a cool, awesome council. And a community that supports them. As far as the interviews go, we've got six great candidates, we've got new names that we've never heard before. This is exciting because I think a few months ago, it was said that nobody's going to want to run for council or be on council. And I knew that wasn't true because we've got a really great community and we've got folks like you guys stepping up and wanting to serve. And and this is a test run, it's a year and a half that you can just give it a try and maybe you'll like it, maybe you won't, but it won't commit you for the full four years. So without any further ado, we're going to begin. We've got six candidates, so let's start with, I'm going to start from the bottom, Jamie Crane. Can you come right up? So Jamie, I want to thank you for your interest, I know we've seen your name come across our emails lately and it's great to see you and to hear from you. I appreciate your application and I appreciate your wanting to get involved in in the process of city government. So with that being said, tell us about yourself.
Well, my name is Jamie Crane and I have lived in Rice Lake pretty much my whole life.
If you want to take that mic and just almost eat it because.
I'm like, I'm really good at karaoke, so.
You and Bob have done well with each other. Is that better? Is it on?
Not really, is it on?
What, push this button? It's Marcus, oh yes.
Get the green light. Green lights on.
You're just going to go into the mayor's pod.
I can talk louder. I think Kirby's trying to turn it up a little bit, if you mind doing the check check. This is better? This is better? No.
That's louder.
Should I just talk louder?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, can everybody hear her? No. Is it going to intimidate you if I just hand you mine, I'm going to give you as much string as you possibly can?
Can I have the podium so she's kind of facing?
Yeah.
Everybody?
And if you want to tilt it, do you have a little freedom to tilt the whole stand so you can face the council? Sorry, that's a fun thing to do. The banner's perched.
Aren't you glad that you got to go first?
Yes. Okay. I don't have to be that close. It's still on?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so my name is Jamie Crane and I have lived in Rice Lake pretty much my whole life. We moved here when I was four, then I moved away for maybe four years in my. Twenties, early twenties, and then came back and I was born and raised on, well, not born, but raised on Milwaukee. And now I live two houses down from the house that I grew up in and I'm with my family there. My day job, I currently work at White Spitter Studio, I work as a custom designed jeweler. Who runs the operations and all the customer relations on a day to day basis for a small local business that has grown greatly in the last ten years I've been there. And I also have my own side business of North Clay, where I turned a pandemic hobby into an entrepreneurship business to afford things like prices. So I. Am very strongly connected to this community and it means a lot for me to be here and to help speak. The minds of people like you who have concerns or issues or thoughts. Who may not be able to bring them forward themselves, but I would be able to help them do that.
All right, council, any questions for? I have one, how did you hear about this opportunity?
I heard about this opportunity. Because in the last few months, I checked the Rice Lake website every day. And I did not see it initially coming up on my mobile device, but I saw it the one day that I checked it on my laptop. And I think that there can be a little difference in communication, looking at the website globally versus your desktop. And I just happened to see it and I thought long and hard and I said, well, this opportunity. Doesn't come every day, so I have to give it a go. And I did.
What's your biggest quality that you think you could bring to serve the people of Rice Lake?
I think that my biggest quality is that I'm very open with human issues. And the community and I can help bring and communicate issues to the front. And I do that by listening and empathizing and I'm also really, really adamant about doing my research before I make any decisions. And if I'm not qualified to speak on something, I will admit it. And I will ask for a pause or a break to find out the issues or the facts. And I just want to support. Everyone.
Lately, you have been doing a lot of research on the Dollar General, I have not been very impressed with your ability to. Sort it out, not jump to conclusions, but ask the questions again. And when you didn't understand, you kept going and you kept asking the questions. Tell us what you learned about that process and how complicated, maybe how frustrating, tell us, tell us what you were thinking of.
Yes, that is initially what really got me involved in the city and I only wish that I would have started sooner. With the Dollar General going at the bottom of our street, my very first initial thought was panic, so when you're dealing with something. That is personal on your street specifically. It's really easy to bring up your concerns with a lot of emotion and frustration without thinking things through. And I learned that really quickly through your help and guidance, through especially through Tony and through the rest of you communicating back to me. That. That I was asking the right questions and I just feel like I could, I was helped in how to communicate and how to go about things, which has made a huge difference. And how to communicate with legality. And the legal issues can be tricky. So. How I felt responsible in this issue is that it's not just me that lives on the streets. And I felt like I had an opportunity to stand up and take a voice for everyone that was on my street. And for the street next to us and like the neighbors that I've been with my whole life, who don't have necessarily the resources to find out the information, to. To do the digging, to ask the questions, to learn what our zoning policies are, to learn how to communicate them in the right way that could. Send an email and to be able to have it read or to have your thoughts heard. And to be able to help direct such. In a personal topic for myself, but to also be level headed, but how to help direct other people to the right resources and the way to go about it. Have been one of the greatest things I've learned from you all through our communication and emails. And I take a lot of pride in that and it's been really enjoyable how much I have learned. And so with that, I just feel like, and I don't want this to be about one issue that I'm running because of the Dollar General. I have personally found through this experience that I do really appreciate and strongly encourage the freedom of. Property owners to be able to. Do what they will with their land, but when it comes to leasing or selling to an actual corporate chain who doesn't necessarily align with the values. Of our community in the way that the business is run in itself and what it affects such a large portion. Of the safety and the roads and the infrastructure and the way that we've been living for so long without being able to have a voice to like speak our opinions on it. Is what really. Kind of drop drew me in to this in the first place, so. I've just been learning a lot and I'm really eager to learn more. And to go with something in an open communicating way, I know that I won't win every battle and I know that I don't have all the answers, but I'm super. Open and ambitious to do the research and to take people's thoughts and ideas into consideration and to bring them forward. And to pause and to reflect if I need a minute to to draw a conclusion or to come up with an answer, I'm okay to do that too. So that's kind of my journey, how I got here.
Any questions?
I just want to thank you for taking this time to have the interest in what's going on in our town. There's a bunch of people there that share that statement. They wouldn't be here on a beautiful summer night if they didn't have an interest in what's going on here. Yeah. Keep using that voice.
I agree.
There's there's. There's places for you here, there's. This is just an appointment here for this one time around.
Yes. Yes.
There's going to be in the next, the whole election cycle, a lot more opportunity for me to do this. That's a valid bug, so.
Yes, I'm definitely looking forward to it. This opportunity happened so quick, I just had to dive right in. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, James. Next, we have Daryl Johnson. Daryl, come on up. I have to admit, I didn't think I'd see you up here for a while after the last time we saw each other.
I thought I was retired, but I really truly enjoy being with you guys and serving the city.
If you don't mind, holler into that mic a little bit. Very good.
I can yell. Good evening. I'm Daryl Johnson. Been a resident at Rice Lake for 35-plus years. My family has owned land here since 1980. And then I moved up after I graduated high school and developed the property. And then called it home. I raise two kids. My wife and I have been married for 31 years and it's just a great place to raise your family. I'm so glad to be a part of it. Glad that you are all here tonight. Mayor, council, citizens of Rice Lake, I extend my sincere gratitude to John Hagstrom for his invaluable contributions to our community. His knowledge and leadership will be deeply missed. Thank you, John, for everything you've done for us.
Thanks, Daryl.
I've learned a lot. I still enjoy public service and I feel I still have a lot to give back to our community. I'll do my best to make this a positive experience for everyone. I firmly believe working with all of you would demonstrate our commitment to the greater good of our citizens and to help heal the divide in our community. And we'll always cherish the memories of our past endeavors together. We did a lot as a city council. Recently, I volunteered my time to close out the Rice Lake and Martin Road Utility Extension Project. I engage in discussions with the engineer, city staff, to ensure the project's successful completion. I also just recently volunteered my time to assist Public Works in their first-ever hydrant and valve replacement on Arnold Road. That was huge for this community. When I came on after John Warner passed, I wanted to train our Public Works to do the work that Rice Lake used to hire me for. We were able to get a mini excavator approved by city council. And we've done great things to save our community money. And I've enjoyed it. It was like building a second construction company. I want to thank our Public Works staffs that are here tonight. You guys are all doing great, always watching when I'm driving out the community. My expertise in city infrastructure is an asset for our community, allowing me to assist in future planning while overseeing existing infrastructure. Our city engineers look forward to having me back at the table. All city projects I was involved in never went over budget. And I always insisted on fiscal responsibility throughout my term as councilor. It was the first time the Public Works budget wasn't operating in the red. We have all set up Rice Lake for a positive, bright financial future. Mayor, council, we have accomplished remarkable things together in the past. I think my appointment would show the voters, we can all work together and help move our community forward in a positive way. I would be honored to serve with you all again. I would like to recognize the city staff and residents that are here to show their support in moving this appointment forward for Rice Lake. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Daryl, what's one of your biggest assets that you think you can bring?
I can bring unity. I can bring our community back together. I enjoy leading with the public. My last two years on city council was the greatest time of my life. That's why I'm back. I don't want to leave. I got so much knowledge to share. And the second point, Council, Hendrickson, infrastructure, future planning is what I thrive on. I can see so far into the future and I want to share all those experiences. I have, for the last six months, shared those experiences with Rice Lake. I can't go away. I got all this stuff in my mind and I want to keep sharing it with Shane, Tony, the councilors, on how to move this city forward.
Tell us how you learned about this position?
I learned about it two weeks ago during the council meeting when John Hagstrom put in his resignation.
Tell us how you're going to bring the community back together and how will you show us that you'll be unified with the whole council?
What I like about this opportunity, Mayor, is that I came forward into a city hall that's divided. And I'm here to work together with all of you, including you, Mayor. I sent you a message last week.
And I ignored it.
And that's okay, but I just wanted to let you know that I am here to move us forward in a positive way. And I promise I will.
Tell me how, because this isn't the first text and the first email that I received from you to work together. And it just backfired each time.
I don't think anything has backfired, Mayor. I've worked hard for this community and I know you know it. We did great things all the way up until the campaign started. You and I sat in the city hall after council meetings, planning the future of this city, Public Works, the mini excavator. I am absolutely happy with our track record and I know we can get back there. I promise you.
Tell me what changed in the last six months. December 9th, I remember it all too well.
I wasn't here December 9th. I was on vacation.
I'm pretty sure it was December 9th.
Yeah, I was with Ferris in Las Vegas on our tight supply.
I think you know the timeline time.
Is this getting a personal?
Yeah, it feels like it. It's not so free and casual.
You abstain from being part of choosing since you clearly don't like him?
Exactly.
Why would we want to fight that? I see you. Let's start.
Okay. Who's ready to get happy? Well, obviously you're not because you're sitting there with an attitude.
Yes.
I don't think that you are here. I don't have to be. I'm sitting here now watching you and all the things that you have said have been negative. You have no business being negative. You're supposed to be biased, unbiased, and you're not. And that's not okay.
I think she's bringing up great concerns that people need to hear.
There's a lot that people don't know behind the scenes. Let's say that. There is a ton that she has told him back. So you just give her that opportunity because she has yet to give an apology.
Maybe she's not old enough.
We got a lot of humility on this application. They're all being humble and apologizing for wrongness. Let's start there.
Yeah, maybe she should step up and do that.
Yeah.
The lies that were told. Any further questions for Daryl?
Thank you for that, Gavel. I want to thank you for your interest, Daryl, to be back, be part of this again. Thank you for the work that you've done for Rice Lake and I know that you're sincere about it. Whatever kind of little differences, we have the personalities around here. It's going to be left out, not even in the parking lot, down the road somewhere. Not, not in, not in here, not as long as I'm in this chair. I'm not going to put up with it and I don't expect you folks to do it either. You can have your differences.
I appreciate that. Councilor Quaid has stepped forward into the building to try to heal this community. Even the people that are upset with me, I'm here to heal this. And I will work harder than I had before. We will be successful and I promise to all of you. To you, Mrs. Alshar, also.
So thank you, Daryl. I would encourage anybody after this meeting to meet with me in the city hall. We know who you are. We all know who you are. I've seen your names all on Facebook. Either we do this and we move on or we don't and we keep having this. And don't get me wrong, I love having all you guys here, but there's some stuff that happened that has not been addressed. I took all the heat and I'm okay. I will stand up and take the heat. But this is going to keep happening and I agree with all of you. I totally agree. We've got to move on. But there's some people that need to start talking and they're all in this room. Understand?
Facebook is recreation, influencer. This is business. We don't conduct city business on Facebook or any other social media that goes down right here.
Thank you. Any further questions for Daryl?
I'd just like to say, being a resident here for 40 years, in a short period of time, I've known Daryl. He got a lot done for this city and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Pat McDonald.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, public mayor, council, for having the opportunity to apply for this position. I've been a resident of Rice Lake for 46 years. Moved here out of Herman Town because I didn't like where Herman Town was going. And by the way, it was a nice, quiet community, township at the time. Very simple, very easy lifestyle and I liked the was. I live on the north side of it, where it's five acres, where I can be nice and quiet up there myself. But decided I better start getting involved with things. But I same thing moving around the community that I wasn't comfortable with. So I'm on the zoning board here currently. I have run for the other appointment position earlier and was not picked, unfortunately. That's no problem. I have no begrudges or bitterness about that. But I do think that Rice Lake is in a very pivotal position right now and very sensitive. I have commercial business in Herman Town. I've watched them grow, seeing some of the little pitfalls and things that have gone on over there. And some of them are going to be coming here. There's a big tidal wave coming into Rice Lake right now that people don't realize. It's an avalanche of development. If we don't watch it and keep an eye on it, it could overwhelm us. So I have a little bit of experience in that and I've got a plan on spending the rest of my days in this community. So if I do, I want to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. Any questions?
What's your biggest asset that you would bring to the city?
Probably 45 years of self-employment, having to make tough decisions that aren't popular and having experience working with public, have retail and installation business in my business, dealing with employees over 45 years, have them coming and going. Having had employees get on their computer and attack me. I'm not going to go for that. I don't believe in that either because I added on the need. So I've been in that situation myself, experienced it. So with that, I've built up a bit of shell on me and I'm not afraid to make some tough decisions when it comes to the appointment needs to be done. And I've mentored a lot of young people through the years, through high school and college. And I've gone through very successful careers and they're still in contact with me. And you can get with me even today.
Pat, you served on the planning and zoning board. Tell us what you've learned and what you appreciate about serving on that board.
I've gotten education on what is going on in Rice Lake a little bit. There's some things that are, there's some big movement going on. I appreciate that. I was off the subject a little bit. I was just at a meeting in Herman Town this morning and they've got a big development. They're going to start pushing in Herman Town for a city core downtown area, which I think would be very applicable for this city. I think we should look at that, same criteria that they're doing over there because Rice Lake is going to grow. And if we watch it, manage it right, it's going to do very well. Herman Town sounds pretty well for themselves over there. They have a very stable city and a very good growth income. They have school, things going on, a shake and a movement. And I can see Rice Lake is going to be the next community that's going to grow in the proximity of Duluth or right in that area. There's a fringe that the population is going to grow. There's some big industries coming into Duluth that are going to bring a lot of people in here. And there's going to need residential and commercial development, both that balance, and they do well. So I don't like one over the other.
Tell us how you learned about this open position?
Being on the zoning board and communication within the city hall here, I just heard some talk between the members and the council that there was, it's going to be coming up. It was sort of a short, quick deal, but I wanted to make sure that I kept in touch with everybody. So I want to make sure that we're here and if I can do something for you, I'd appreciate the opportunity to do it.
We had an election six months ago and you did not run at that time. What has changed now in the last six months that makes you feel interested in this?
Yep. One that you can help is I finally, anyone who knows me at all, I'm finally going to retire and I will have a little extra time after 45 years of employment. God, thank God I'm retiring. And so I will have a little more time. I have been very busy in the last year, working on a deal, selling my commercial property in Herman Town. So I've been a little busy cleaning that up and getting that transaction taken care of. Hopefully I'll be wrapping it up this week. So with any luck, I will have some free time coming up.
I appreciate that. You had alluded already to attempting to run for council, not getting in. You attempted to be appointed last time and you didn't get in.
That was fine.
What you did is what impressed me most about you is that you kept on and you just gently found a position that you could fit in and obviously work with that. So I appreciate that about you.
And you have some great candidates coming up. I respect all of them. Yeah, having been involved in stuff, I'm very respectful of the people that are applying. And you're going to have a tough job trying to pick one because they're all good.
Thanks for your interest in that as well.
Thank you.
Michael, is it Jekka?
Jekka, yes.
I read through your application and thank you for your service. Tell us a little bit about yourself. And I'm sorry, your service. You were in the Navy?
Yes, I spent six years active duty in the Navy and I volunteered in the fire service for 10 years now. My family moved to Rice Lake after the fires in 1918 burned down their farm in Cloquet. So fourth generation. That doesn't qualify me for the council, but just kind of goes to show why I care about this community. I think I have a kind of unique background in engineering and volunteering for public service. So when I saw this opportunity, I decided to support it.
What did you hear about this opportunity?
On the city website.
What's your biggest asset that you feel you can bring to the council?
I think I'm a calm decision maker. When things get heated, I'm pretty good at. When things get heated, I'm pretty good at staying level-headed. And I, I know what I don't know, if that makes sense. So, you know, once this topic comes up that I'm not an expert on, I'm going to talk to people, I'm going to talk with people in the neighborhoods who are affected by these decisions, and try to get an understanding of where they're at, and try to meet them there. Thank you.
Is your, is your fire department wanting to do this appointment?
No.
Did they put you up to it?
They did not, in fact, I think they're probably surprised, but I'm, if you haven't noticed, I'm not a big public speaker.
Well, you do just fine.
Thank you.
Excuse yourself very well. So, thank you, thank you again for your service.
Thank you for your service, thanks for still serving the community like the way you do.
Thank you.
Uh, you did say Navy, right?
Yes, sir, I understand the words perfect, but
thank you.
Just same question that I asked Pat. What, what makes you want to do this now as opposed to running when we had the last election?
Sure, so, you know, generally, I'm happy with the direction that the community is going. And so I didn't feel the need to run. But when I saw this opportunity, you know, I started thinking about who would fill it. And I agree, there are a lot of great candidates here today. I wouldn't be upset with any of them getting it, but I realized that I, myself, have grown into someone who I think would be an asset. So I decided to apply for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Walz. So tell us about yourself.
Can you hear me okay?
I can try.
Better. I can talk louder.
There you go.
I, I'm listening here for miles. Um, my name is Lisa Walz. I live at thirty-eight sixty-one West Tisha Road. I've been there for twenty-two to twenty-three years now. Um, I got familiar with this area in my early twenties. Uh, I actually bartended out here and really liked the area, then met someone who lived out here, and ended up buying a home out here, and I'm still here. Um, I really like it out here, I like that I have privacy. I don't have, um, a lot of light pollution where I'm at, I can see the northern lights from my backyard. Um, I like that I have space, but yet I'm close enough to get to Walmart, or the grocery store, or anything like that. But I, I love this community, and I would like to see more people get involved, including myself. I've been trying over the last three to four months to come to as many meetings as I can in order to educate myself. I've gone over a lot of the comprehension plan many times. Learned a lot in that, in that experience. I'm a what you see is what you get. I didn't dress up for the occasion. I work from home, so I don't have to dress up, I can stay in my pajamas. Hurt there. I have nothing to gain here as far as a personal agenda, hidden anything. I just want to help the community, and I want to help the community members. It's not just the community as a whole, but there are going to be people individually who are going to need assistance coming forward. They might not feel comfortable talking in public, or, or, you know, speaking out of turn per se. So I want to be able to help people. I, I, let's see here, I, I, I'm a very analytical person, yet I'm very artsy. I have a pottery studio as my side gig. It's my overpriced hobby, as I call it. Um, that keeps me busy on the side when I'm not working. I work full-time, been with the same company for twenty-two, twenty-three years this summer, in different positions from customer service, data mining auditor, business process consultant is my current position, where I work with a lot of electronic data. So I do a lot of research, things like that. I have a very calm demeanor. It takes a lot to rile me up. It takes a lot to offend me, which can be good and bad. But I, I like that, it's something that I learned from my dad, who, he was in law enforcement, and that he carried that through for me, that you need to stay calm regardless of how passionate you are. It's, it's okay to be passionate and calm. You don't have to be excitable all the time when you're passionate about something. I can pretty much get along well with anyone through my work. I work with different countries multiple. So i- it, any type of borders or lines that might be in the sand, I can get along with pretty much anyone and learn to hear them for what they need to hear back from me. And what I mean by that when I say that is sometimes when we listen, we don't always hear. And I think sometimes we need to open our ears a little differently to how we hear things, because we're just listening. I want to see this community flourish, and I want to help with that. And I want to get, again, like I said, more people involved. A turnout like this every other week would be fabulous. You know, if we can somehow get people more involved, that would be great. What else would you like to know?
Well, how did you learn about this open position?
I wasn't able to come two weeks ago, but somebody else was, and they called me that night and told me.
What's the biggest asset you feel like you can bring to the council?
I think that would be being able to communicate with pretty much anyone, and being able to get along with anyone. You know, you have to play nice in the sandbox, is what I, I've learned in all my years in United Health Group. The different people you work with, you don't get along with everybody, but you have to play nice in the sandbox. And there's ways to get along with everybody, regardless of your different opinions, if you disagree. You know, there are ways to do it.
I like what you say, Lisa, about bringing people together. Sharing information.
Yes.
Be in space, sharing with everyone.
Yes, transparency.
You feel that should have crossed sides here. This is great, wouldn't it be great?
If we saw this every other week, it'd be fabulous.
We are so boring sometimes, we are so terribly boring, but it's kind of like
I have a phone speaking, yeah, on a Tuesday.
But being, like, getting more people involved.
Yes, and even with planning and zoning. You know, I just got involved in that, and it's very interesting to me. I love researching and, and even digging deeper into ordinances to figure out, all right, what are we trying to say, what do we want to say? Because there's two different things, what you're trying to say and what you want to say differ.
Tell us what you've learned about your time, uh, I should say researching, because you've only had one meeting, planning and zoning, correct?
Yeah.
So tell us a little bit about what you're learning so far, or maybe what got you interested in that?
I've always been interested in being part of a bigger community, or being more involved in the civic part of it. Unfortunately, I never knew how to go about doing it until a few months ago. And someone knew that I had a passing in my family, and I needed something to keep my mind busy. And they're like, you wanted to get involved, now's the time. So that's when I started, and researching even the comprehensive plan was amazing. Like, the things that you can learn. I still want to go through it again, you know, there's, you learn something new every time you go through that.
Go further, glad you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being interested in, in serving.
Thank you for having me.
Good to know, and even the last few moves.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Any further questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Cheryl, you say your first name, correct?
Cheryl.
Cheryl.
My mom, she just wants to torture me, so I always have to spell it.
But tell us about yourself.
My name is Cheryl Chesser. I have three adult children, I raised here, I've been here for fifty-plus years. Um, I'm a general contractor, home inspector, and I do commercial buildings at some of the big box stores. I'm glad none of those buildings fell in when we had the mall fall in, but um, I'm like, get up there, you're going to have to, um, snow blow off that roof, so I don't have to feel so bad. That's what we did, we had to work on a bunch of building collapses when we had the record snowfall. My kids are engineers, my son-in-law, so we talk a lot of construction and crazy things that happen with infrastructure and whatnot. So, um, we can be boring sometimes, too, so. But, um, I'm a talker, I'm pretty much open to everyone. What people say, you're easy to talk to, I listen, and being that I've been here for so many years, I care about the community. I, I know there's stuff going on, I'm not, not afraid to have that conversation whether I agree with somebody or not. This is the, you're just trying to find that common ground, and, um, hopefully you can go from there. I know it's not always easy, especially if people are digging in their heels and don't agree with, you know, whatever the discussion is on. And all, people aren't a fan of the roundabouts. My friend lived in Grand Rapids, and there's like six roundabouts or so. So I get a little sick of them. And I have to go through every single one to get to her house, but, um, yes, I think, I was just on the midway, went to the cities, and almost got hit by a tanker truck, flammable, of course. I'm like, he did not slow down, he just kept going, luckily I did, but, um, I think that, uh, I, I love to sidewalk issues, not issues, I have issues with not having sidewalks, but building the sidewalks, I was like, yes, let's do it, I'm all for that. Safety, I'm a walker, hiker, biker, um, I like safety. I'm the one who drives over, I'm a good driver, but I don't, I don't need to show you how good I am by driving inches from someone. But usually people wave, I mean, you have the motorcycle that points down, or people who have different things, and you know, hey, that's a Jeep person, or whatever. Well, you have to little wave to say thanks for moving over, you know, that's but, um, I'm all about, you know, making infrastructure a balanced and well-planned-out kind of lifestyle, curb appeal, and, I mean, whatever we need for the parks and environment, or whatever it is. It's just important to have that for our future, for, I mean, I raised my, I grew up here, I raised my kids here, it's a great place to be. I laughed when you said Walmart, because I tell they're like, you live so far away. I'm like, nope, I can get to Walmart probably quicker than you. But it's just, I go to Walmart so much, I interchange it with Menard, so. It's, I'm like, you know what I'm talking about. So, um, that's a mom thing, we all do it. With your kids, I do it with stores. But I'm just all about, you know, making it a better place, and a place where everyone can come together, talk, and, you know, I was, I talked about my mom, because my mom was here, but she moved. She's in a small town, and they used to have rides and whatever. But we still go there, we still go, and we talk to people, and it's maybe about nothing, but when I was a kid, it was all about going on rides, and what you entered in the fair, and four-H, and all that stuff. They have the pie eating contest and gunny sack races, and now things like that don't happen as much, but the tractor pull is very popular, and it gathers a very large crowd. But they do the babe tournament, and, I mean, they shut down the street for this, it's in the street. And that, that to me is important. We go there, we talk, we reminisce, and we're like, oh, remember the way back when? And that is what's important about a community, is all that getting together. And, I mean, besides the roads and all that stuff is important, too. But if you can get together and have that conversation with people because you're there at the park, or I went to, um, they have the neighborhood night out, and we're like, oh my God, there's all grandkids and elderly people. And I, I mean, it was a time, I remember when the fall in, you serve beer and stuff, and, um, there was a lot of people there, and I feel like, I know less than most people go to stop now, but, um, I, I would like that to come back, where we have people who maybe have small animals, that kids, because that's always an attraction, but things where people have to walk across the park and have to see people and say hi. And next thing you know, we're talking about whatever, you know, we want to see in our community, or what we don't want to see. But people are having that conversation, that's very important. So, I know, I told you I'm a talker.
Tell us how you learned about this.
Well, my son, um, he, we talk, he's my news for everything, he's my, like, my right-hand man. He tells me all, but I go on Rice Lake Facebook page, too, but he, he gets there usually before me. So, um, and I'm on a lot of different platforms, so, um, because I volunteer and help people with construction stuff and whatever. But, um, he was telling me about it, and, you know, I'm just all about, I know there's stuff going on, and I would like to create something where we all probably get along better and, um, get jobs done, and, you know, it's, it's not easy. I know people get emotional over stuff, and sometimes, excuse me, some over there, sometimes it's really hard to, um, calm down from that, but I, at work, we call them Laurel and Hardy moments, because everybody has them, and you have to put that wall up again, it's no fun. But then, you know, you just take a breather sometimes and come back to it, but, um, it's, it's, um, all about sometimes getting to know somebody, just as a person, instead of like, sometimes here, we don't all know each other. Having that connection, and it helps you to maybe relate to someone and understand them more, because if you don't understand, like, sometimes, even if you don't agree, you have to try to figure out their perspective. You know, if somebody doesn't understand something or whatever, um, and you can have that conversation. I mean, it happens when you vote, you know, we're not all the same. And sometimes you just have to agree to disagree, you know, so. Um, we're not all going to agree, we're not all going to be happy twenty-four-seven, but it's about having that conversation and hopefully keeping things calm. But, um, if you get to know someone a little bit more than just a meeting, you know, sometimes it's easier to navigate through that process.
What did you think of the auditor speaking to us? As far as, how did you like listening to that?
I, I thought it was fine, very informative, and the numbers are, I, I can't see that, you know, so. Um, actually, one of the people gave me their paper, so that was nice of her, but, um, I just, I'm used to, I was a project manager, so numbers, we, I had to sit through hours and hours of meetings, probably three a week, and just listen to where everyone was at with their projects. And I was the crazy one who went around, because being a project manager, if their job isn't done, I had to, like, wait some of my projects to get done. So, I'm like, you need any help with anything? So, I'm like, just, you know, people don't always want help in their business, but, um, their jobs would slow me down. But I also, especially on Monday, when we're having one of those meetings of what you have to tell everyone where your job is at, and I'm like, if you could just say, oh, we're good, we're here, and then move on. But otherwise, you have to sit there and listen to how they're going to get it done, when they're going to get it done, those aren't any fun. So I am used to sitting through hours and hours of meetings, so, um, I'm okay with that. But, um, it's interesting to learn where everything is at. We were kind of laughing at some of the stuff, because we were, I was looking at the budget and where some of the money went, and we're kind of laughing at the coffee budget, or whatever. It's just, it's entertaining sometimes, you have any fun stuff to keep the whatever flowing, so.
What's one of your biggest assets that you bring to the table?
Well, I'm willing to learn, I love learning. People may think that's nuts, but I'm on, um, my daughter tries to get me to read books sometimes. I'm like, if it's not construction, or, or whatever, you know, I'm all about that stuff. So, um, it was funny, because I had someone at my house, and they were looking at my bookshelf, and it's all educational books, you know? So I have everything from the codes to the, um, the home inspection. I mean, these are big, huge books on all of that, so. But I'm also looking at it and saying, well, you might not live in Minnesota, but here's the code we go. You know, because there's, there's people from overseas that are on some of these platforms, and we still, um, we still talk, they think our toilets are funny over here, so. It's just goofy stuff, but it helps a lot of, a lot of homeowners navigate through something, you know, and they're so scared to do something. But it's all about just starting here, and, you know, moving on, so, um, once you start. And that's kind of like here, I'm all about whatever I don't know, I'm willing to learn, and I'm all about whatever I don't know, I'm willing to learn and willing to listen. I'm approachable and I would like to help in the process of making this like a free place to be for everyone and for generations to come.
Any further questions?
They want to get rid of me.
Cheryl, you have been an enjoyment to listen to.
You're kind of alluded to, you don't always agree on everything, but at least make the attempt to understand. That opens up more dialogue. That's, thanks for your interest, good.
Thank you.
Well, council, I think we've had really good candidates. And I thank each and every one of you for coming forward and putting your name on the application. At this point, let's open it up for council discussion.
Well, perhaps in my last official function as a city councillor, I'd like to bring forth a motion to appoint the next councillor tonight. Why? We're in the summer vacation season. As I mentioned two weeks ago, it's important for the city of Rice Lake to maintain a warm and case in so over the summer. And I don't believe it would be right to keep these fine candidates waiting for the next 30 days until the next council meeting. And so unless the council agrees to have a unscheduled meeting as it pertains to the July calendar right now, again, I'd like to bring forth a motion to appoint a candidate tonight. Now, by statute, I cannot vote for the next candidate. That is probably obvious to all of you, but I can bring forth this motion.
Thank you. Tony, we don't have to wait a month.
No. We have a five-minute meeting on this term. We also have a council meeting on the 14th. Or as councilor mentioned, we should schedule our discussion.
We've got further discussion, and we'll come back to that.
It's a lot to take in. And we have some amazing candidates here. It's gonna be tough.
I acknowledge the openness and transparency of making that decision tonight.
One thing I'd like to say to all of the candidates, obviously, we can only pick one. But there will be another election in a year and a half. Don't forget that. And there will be an open position.
And again, three and a half years.
Couple of them.
So if you're not chosen, don't go away. Dig in deeper, dig in more, learn more. Who's Anna and I have been doing this for Dave Montag since we became a city? And I know that, I certainly do, and I believe she does, too. We still have more questions than we have answers. This is all, this is, we're not all pros at this. But it's an interesting thing to do. And Mayor, or Councilwoman, I just want to add a little bit more. I want to, once again, thank you for the service you have had. I understand it's mainly your job position that gets in the way. Way too often, our jobs seem to get in the way of things that you really want to do, but they're kind of necessary in order for your life to happen. So when you're ready and that job is set aside in someplace, I would like to see you go back and do this again.
Thank you.
So we can, we can do it on the floor if you can.
Well, opening up for discussion, I would like to hear some thoughts about what you're looking for in a candidate and good qualities that you've heard about tonight. I can start off. One thing I appreciate is that people who are already serving in our community have decided to take it a step further. And I really appreciate that. Some of you have been coming and you're being faithfully to our meetings and you're reading the comprehensive plan I heard earlier and just keep on volunteering. And when I say volunteering, nobody's getting rich doing this. Spend more time trying to understand and read and learn than anything. And so I appreciate that. And you guys have really made it, that knowledge that is been on council before. And I appreciate that. And then we have a chance to add someone new. With that being said, it's a year and a half appointment and there will be elections. And as well, as in three to half years, it'll be for sure two spots open.
And elections are the way to go. And elections, that was what shows the way to go.
I can tell you just from being appointed, when you don't have the full backing of the community, it's different. When you're appointed, you feel very knowledgeable that you've just been given a gift that not everybody else gets. And it's something that I took very seriously. Some other things that I liked that I heard was the willingness to work forward. I liked hearing that there were people that were willing to take the time to communicate processes to newcomers and to people who aren't familiar. I really appreciate that because there's things that happen I still don't understand why. And so I appreciate the staff filling the Senate trying to teach us.
I just want to say, this was the first time I got a chance to meet some of you and the applications, reading through them was fun for me, but I'd still like to get to know some of you more. That being said, it was fun to see like what assets were, is that what you bring to the table, what your biggest assets were? For me, I try to be consistent in the questions that I ask because I believe in a true job interview, you typically ask some of the same questions. So most, some of those same questions were asked. So they weren't redundant, it's just good to kind of see where everyone is coming from. And so I kind of echo everybody else here. If you don't get appointed tonight, like, you know, continue to still stay involved and continue to come to meetings. And like, for me personally, I'd love to meet each one of the candidates again and can have a cup of coffee with them just to hear more of what you guys want from us as the council members of Rice Lake. So for me, it was really good to get to know a few of you in a little bit different light that I haven't known or met at all before. So thanks for coming up here. It's not the easiest thing to do, to talk in front of a lot of people. So thank you.
I think you all did very well talking in front of everyone. Okay, council, we're at a point where we can schedule out a week. We can give it a couple of weeks and pick this up finance night. You can certainly bring a name forward this evening or names.
I think the council should vote on it. Get it done.
If you don't mind, this is really a tough decision up here. Give the council a little bit of space. It's okay if the council needs a little time. I don't think that we have to be rushed into this. We waited a week or two weeks last time we did this and it just gave everybody a chance to sort it out. If that's okay, if you guys think that.
For me, I'm personally okay that we did vote tonight.
I'm okay.
You guys are okay voting tonight? Jane, which of you have a question?
Coming up to the mic, please.
Before I ask a question, I'm gonna ask if it's okay to ask two questions that I had for you while applying for this. And it's okay if they're answered, it might even help everyone who has applied for this. And so I guess I just kind of wanted to get a little bit of feedback because I don't know everything you do while you're here. And I'm learning, and if I'm gonna come into it or if someone else is going to come into it, it might be nice to hear a couple of your thoughts, if you're okay with that.
Okay, so the question was, what do we do?
I guess my question is, if one of us were appointed, what are some of the most immediate priorities or challenges you would want us to help focus on? And what is a typical position of reprise in Hexton? What would that look like for us?
Sure. So first of all, we look at what committee's his absence would mean open. And we would look at building notes right offhand. I don't know what those are, utilities and joint and zoning board. And then we would look at really door availability. Now, each one of us has different stages of life that we're in. Some of us work full-time and then we serve on top of that. And some of us are a little more retired. But you'll find that we have different, we can fit you in no matter, no matter what your busy schedule is.
My schedule is, I can speak for everyone else. And then I guess my last question was just currently, how does the city council gather your decision? Just based off of our interviews and our applications? And then do you speak amongst yourselves? Do you kind of have an idea just of this long time?
I think the council is saying that, yes, they have someone in mind that they would like to vote on tonight, they're ready to do that. And we're open for discussion. Anybody who wants to share their thoughts and so their give and take of discussion. What everybody's looking for is probably different for all of us. Some people might be looking for experience. Some people might be looking for cohesiveness. Some might be just calmness, willingness to learn, willingness to be part of a team. And the list can go on and on.
That was exactly just what I needed to know.
But everybody else, maybe you guys want to share kind of what you're looking for and what qualities that you're looking for.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Is the vote done in the forum?
To make a motion, and if you get a second to that, then move forward. And there could be more than one candidate that looks forward.
Well, keeping in mind, this is a temporary position. No like. Temporary position. That comes for a year and a half. And end of, what I see it as the best interest for Rice Lake, I would nominate Darryl Johnson.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I will say that Darryl Johnson does come with a lot of experience, we all know that. And you guys know that what I went through from September 11th to the end of December, trying to hold these meetings together, that was really difficult for me to have all that cred being brought into our council rooms. And I don't know that that has changed any. And that's my fear, is that it hasn't. Six months isn't long enough. I think you're sowing yourself, Sharon.
Are you handling it well?
It's exhausting.
Any suggestions on the board? On a discussion?
Not for you, sir, this is for the council. I personally would have liked to have seen someone new, you know, so many. And I think we can still do that, this a year and a half. You have to have someone new that's never been to heart of this, that can start fresh. I think the city of Rice Lake deserves that. So we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of voting for Darryl Johnson to be appointed, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Thank you, we have an abstain. All right, we will move on to the main calendar. We have the July calendar. We have 4th of July observed, of course, on the 4th. The 7th is 6:00 PM finance meeting. 14th, 6:00 PM is the council meeting. 15th is planning and zoning. 16th is MIC at 6:30 PM. The 28th, 5:00 PM WLSSD. And then 6:00 PM is the city council meeting. Any further additions or differences?
No, no MIC meeting in July.
All right, I think that is it. So I will entertain a motion for adjournments. So move.